To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the roll call show that all members are present. I did not see any citizen comments. And we will do board member committee reports. We'll start with Deb.
I had agenda planning and just had finance right before the board meeting tonight.
Chad?
I just have the finance meeting before this meeting.
All right, thank you. Sue?
I had a C general meeting. And two speakers, political analyst, Joyce Olson, and then Senator Roger Chamberlain and Representative Ruth Richardson were the speakers. And those presentations are, she just sent, she just sent those. Both of them, I just thought that legislators are always interesting in whatever, but kind of like where they're going, I thought it was good. And the landscape that Olson did, I thought was really, really good as well. So they're worth a look. And then I did the MSBA conference on Thursday morning. And I did two round tables. They hidden expenses within construction and then building quality agriculture program.
I went to that one too.
That was, was good. Both were good. I enjoyed the keynote and, and of course, I like listening to commissioners. So it was a good day.
Good. Busy. Jim?
I had a Ram River special ed co-op meeting this morning. So we've got a lot of procedural stuff done.
Good. Eric Minx, I had a finance committee meeting prior to this one. Don?
I attended the conference, two round tables, one on the Roberts rules. And then I did the other one on school board evaluation. And then lunch and the keynote speaker.
Okay, good. Um, I had the executive committee meeting last Wednesday, agenda planning. As most of you know, or all of you know, I guess, all the committees have been assigned. So check the email or check the Google Doc to see what committees you've been placed on. And I guess we've been talking about, well, emailing a little bit the last couple of months, Deb, myself and Ben with MSBA about with our alignment of our school board goals that we set last year. We've been talking with Gail Gilman, the gal that come in last year and worked with us. And we are gonna have her come back and I believe one of her colleagues on March 16th. So we're gonna be between now and March 16th, we're gonna be sending out another self-evaluation for us to do, probably like early February. So if everyone, when we send that out, if you guys could complete it in a timely manner so that we can have all the results sent back to MSBA and she can go through it last year like she did with us. Yeah, and then we can move forward and hopefully develop some board goals for 2021, 2022. That's all I have. We'll move on to the student council report. Jacob?
Hello, yes. The student council has been working, well, we've been working to get a snow days. Trying to think of the word. We've been trying to get our snow days back in some form of order. Currently have committees in this council to figure out what sort of activities we can do. We recently had our second competition with the students. So we are planning our third one to start next week, actually, yes.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the superintendent report.
Awesome. Look for that email to come out here in the next couple of weeks on that school board. Solve this piece. I think the board should be very proud of the work that they've done in the last year. As a result of that board self-assessment, we were able to come out of that with setting school board. Ultimately, set five, one of which was to start a board mentor program, which we did. One of which was to align the superintendent evaluation with the board goal. We did, which was, was a huge piece for us as well. Another one of our goals was to continue on with yearly self-assessment. So I'm proud of that work, not satisfied. But take some time with that and what will be nice is we'll be able to compare whatever, you know, we learned from this year to last year. And it will help pull out some areas that we think that we need to work on for the future. Today was a huge day in our school district. We were able to bring our students back to school. It was an exciting, amazing day. I was able to begin my day at the primary school. And to see all of our students walking in and many of them had backpacks bigger than they were coming in because they had to bring all of their stuff back, right? But they were just happy. It was just, it was just, you know, all of the different, you know, talk out there with adults. You know, when you actually get inside of the school and see what's happening, they're just happy. They want to be there. They have their, their fill with pride. And, and the teachers were happy and it was just a really, really good special day for us. You know, to my knowledge, no issues, you know, things were pretty fluid. The buses got back on the roads and, you know, things just started moving. We're hopeful, well, we know that we're gonna start back with our middle school, high school next Monday, which will be in a hybrid fashion. And I know that there'll be some anxiety associated with coming back. I know that we've had a lot of success in the distance learning and lots of areas. But, you know, it's, it's that next step forward for us to get back into full in-person learning. I want to, and I know not everyone's gonna agree with this next statement I'm gonna, gonna make. But as superintendent, my, my goal is to end the year with us having the moral victory of having our, all of our students in our middle school and high school face to face every day. You know, what, whether that, you know, could, might be April, might be May, I don't know. But that we're, we're not gonna lose hope that that's gonna happen. So, you know, it's gonna, this next month or two is really going to tell us a lot. You know, when the COVID numbers were getting very high, our school district was no exception to that. As a matter of fact, we got to a point where we saw the control that we could not staff our buildings. I'm happy to tell you that as of today, with the knowledge that I have right here and now, of course, it couldn't have changed already, but we're starting this year off at a base zero of zero active COVID cases that we're aware of, in terms of official ones that have been reported. So, you know, we're still gonna be living that whole monitoring of symptoms. You know, testing, we'll be doing testing, we'll be doing contact tracing. There'll be quarantines, you know, all of that will be happening. We just hope to be able to keep, keep numbers low enough, you know, to keep people safe and, and also to be able to continue to have school, right? We don't want to take a step backwards. But, you know, we all need to just recognize that that could happen. That could happen to any, any school, but we just, we're really gonna, you know, hope for the best here. Vaccination has been an area that has been our largest time issue that we've been spending a lot of time with, just in the last, at the end of last week and now at the beginning of this week. We are giving many of our staff the opportunity to get vaccinated. Yesterday, at the, if you watched the governor's news conference, they are unveiling a pilot program, which basically they're taking a portion of the, I think they're saying about 12,000 vaccines that they have right now, which is not very many. And they're splitting them in half, half of which will go to divvy it out to, to school districts and daycare providers and the other half with the hopes to, to begin the 65 and older opportunity for vaccinations. So they're starting a pilot program for schools, tools portion. And we were allocated, our school district of Princeton Public Schools was allocated eight vaccinations. Right? We were, we, we got eight. So that tells, that gives-
Eight for four people then.
Well, well, it's eight people. It's eight, we got eight people. We got eight slots.
Oh, first doses.
So we were tasked with something that we didn't really want to be tasked with, which was the, we, we were tasked with prioritizing staff members that would have the opportunity to be invited to have the first, these first eight, right? And the state did provide some guidance, but, you know, within that, we need to establish our own parameters and we've done that. And we got this information early yesterday morning. We had to get the information turned around, criteria built, selection and identification and then communication to all staff. But then in particular, they, that were able to get the vaccination. Those people had until 11:59 last evening to accept. And then if they didn't, then, you know, we would then be able to reassign. So that we were going through that process today. Now, in addition to that, we have had some random opportunities as well. In our partnership and cooperation with the different counties, there have been some different vaccine clinics where they had intended for the group of one A, but then there's extra, if you will, right? So now with the openness to go to that next tier of 65 and older and educators and daycare providers, then we are, we're allowed that opportunity, right? So if that's one of those things, it's super random that I have to constantly be checked, like knowing when I get a ding on my inbox is time sensitive because we will literally get an email that says, you know, Sherburne County's got, I'm, I'm saying this as an example, 19 spots left, first come, first served. And all, all Sherburne County superintendents give it the same time. Boom, send it out, you know, good luck, everybody. So here was, here's what we got is this randomness to where we have this eight process where we're very criteria selective and prioritization, right? You know, most of which would you serve with age and, you know, risk factors and the whole business. And then you get these random things that come, first come, first served, that, you know, we don't, if, if we took the time to say, well, let's see who should get it and then send it out, well, then it's got no opportunity. So we send that, so we got, you know, we got some people are getting them, you know, through just random opportunities and some, and some people are going through the process. So we don't know what, you know, we're assuming that, you know, next week, if this pilot continues, that we would get, they'll might say, well, okay, we got more vaccines. You get another eight slots or 10 slots or whatever, and then we do it again until we're able to, you know, give everybody that opportunity. So, you know, that's just a glimpse inside of a lot of the work that's happened in the last couple of weeks. Which really has nothing to do with teaching and learning. I'm looking at Jessica up on the screen and I'm thinking, gee, I didn't even talk at all about all the amazing things that are happening with curriculum and instruction and personalized learning and technology integration, right? And Michelle's gonna talk to you a lot tonight about budget, right? And legislature that's gonna impact the budget and all that. But we can't be here all night, so I'll add my remarks and take any questions if you have any.
Is there any questions for Ben?
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ben. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Sue, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Don, is there any discussion? Here in none will vote by roll call, starting with Deb.
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Eric Stramberg, yes. Great, the motion's approved. We're gonna discuss and act on a previous board meeting. We have a motion to approve the previous board meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Seconded by Eric. Seconded by Chad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, starting with Chad.
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes. Don?
Yes.
Eric Stramberg, yes. Deb?
Yes.
All right, motion's approved. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Eric Minx. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, starting with Sue.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Eric Stramberg, yes. Deb?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Consent agenda's approved. We have no action items tonight. We have information, information, the referendum survey results. The person that's presenting the survey results isn't available until approximately 6:30. So we're gonna move on and start with the budget. And then when he comes available, I think we're just gonna pause the budget and move on to the referendum survey results. And then we'll come back to the budget, if that's okay with Michelle.
Yep.
Absolutely.
All right. So let's move on to the budget.
Item we have on there is COVID-19. You've seen this before. We have updated it. So. We received 831,841 in CARES funds and the items above are what we spent that on. ESER funds for the rest of the year will be to do the class size the rest of the year because of the CARES funds only went through December 30th of 2020. So ESER actually, those funds can be spent into next school year. But the 310 will actually all be eaten up with the class size reduction piece. The Gears funds currently needs to be allocated. We have 110,000 there. Initially, we thought we would be spending it on iPads for K2, but we finished up with the Sherburne County, the city of Princeton and some CARES funds. So we did not have to use that. We can also use that into next school year. Lax County, we bought hotspots with the 88,500 that we have there. As I said, Sherburne County was iPads and then they gave us $101,000 check that needed to be for expenses from March to December 30th of 2020. And so we said that we spent that on the childcare piece that happened back in March, April and May. That's, we bailed out community by 110,000. So the city of Princeton, we talked about, we're getting an additional 6% on MA funds. This is showing the first payment we received from MA this year. So it's not all of the 6%, but that will bump up that area and that's in special education area. ESER funds, the second round, which we haven't received any details about other than that we might receive 1.3 million. So there'll be more to come with that. Any questions regarding CARES or COVID? Okay, then we have been working on the revised budget for '21. On the first spreadsheet shows totals for each of the funds. So I'm gonna skip over the general fund and I'm not gonna really talk about fund six or fund seven tonight. We've gotta update those two yet. They'll be slightly different in next time. Food service, though we've updated, we're looking at possible revenues of 1.3 million. We, we are only receiving money from the federal government and we're looking at expenses of 1.6. So we've got over $300,000 variance there to the negative. And that's going to eat up that fund balance that we rolled, as you can see, 134,000 fund balance there. So we'll take some of that down and back into the normal piece. The reason that we're showing a variance of negative for the current year now is because once we went into the normal school year, we are only feeding the kids who choose to eat in class. We're not feeding them seven days a week, breakfast and lunch. So we're having meals being reimbursed to us.
We don't get that higher reimbursement rate?
We do, right? We do. We do get the higher reimbursement, but right now we're not getting any state aid, either in breakfast or lunch. The only money we're getting is who we're actually giving the meal to. So we have 600 kids in the building and only 300 are taking meals that week. We get money for 300, but we might need 400 to take a meal in order to break even. The reason that we came out so well in the spring and the summer is because we were doing seven days a week and during that timeframe, we were, you know, we had 1,000 people coming in, a lot more than now. We've been doing the break there. It's not near what it was when the pandemic first started, so. Community education, currently we are looking at 1.3 in revenue, 1.5 in expenditures. Large part of that reduction, negative variance there is because of preschool. We typically run about 195 preschool kiddos. And right now, I think we have 124. And the other piece that's hitting us hard is we receive revenue from the county called pathway grants. And those grants are for economically challenged families and they ran out of money. The county doesn't have enough money. So we're getting very little money there. And I think last year, what we received was either 80 or $90,000. So that, that's a hit done from four. So both of those funds, we're still reviewing and change slightly. And then we bring it here for next meeting. The revised general ed budget is the next tab. And LTFM and operating capital, those budgets have not changed other than to update revenue a little bit, but our expenditures are identical to what they were before. Jessica and I reviewed staff development and QCOM staff development. We are actually going to be spending less money in this year so that variance is quite a good variance there, positive 189,000. But we are anticipating that we will be able to ramp up education for teachers in the summer. So hopefully we'll be able to spend more of that in the next school year. QCOM is relatively the same. Technology assigned. The only thing that we changed there was revenue. We had less people take the, what we call our internal insurance plan. So we do have a fund balance there, as you see below, so that's not really a big issue. Program initiatives, we did not change. Activity account has not changed. Fund 19, we pulled out our COVID expenses and put them in what we call a fund 19. Our activity account is actually called fund 10. And that's just so we can track those separate and pull them. That's, the money that we have received is 1,427,000 for this current year. That does not include the Gears funds of 110 because we did not allocate those. As you can see, that variance is a little bit negative. We still have busing to pay for and that we need to go over into the unassigned area to be covered. And then we look at the unassigned area, which is the one that's most, that's the one that runs our schools on a day-to-day basis. Our revenues were anticipating a total of 33,005. Our expenditures are 34,005, basically. Variance of negative 967. Our original budget was 1,006,000. Negative variance. The reason for the discrepancy is we've increased revenue. Special ed specifically has gone up a little bit, well, quite a bit. I'm waiting for a new report there. Hopefully it's relatively the same and we can leave that number where it's at. Also, our expenses, as an example, we had in the budget somebody, some type of PAC person to run the PAC. We had an amount set aside for that. Well, we didn't fill that position. We also took out funds in the fall for activities area. We didn't run robotics, so we pulled that out completely. So we're seeing some savings in, in those areas. And we will probably see savings in other areas. We just don't know exactly what this last part of the year is gonna bring. So on the revised budget, we're still reviewing. There will be changes as we go along here. We anticipate that we will be able to approve the revised budget in February instead of March at our first February meeting. Any questions?
No questions?
Okay. It's 6:27 on ESER.
It's not on yet.
He's not on. Okay.
Just, Peter, are you on the screen yet? No. All right, so let's continue on with more finance.
Okay. Enrollment, we're looking at parameters now and the board sets the parameters and that will be done at our first February meeting, hopefully. I set enrollment parameters, state percent, class size guidelines. And negotiations are, will actually be set in a closed session. We will put a number there, but that probably won't be done in February. So if you click on the enrollment tracking sheet, this is the enrollment tracking sheet that Emily puts together for us. And we're actually holding quite nicely with enrollment. Our average enrollment at the end of December overall is 3,139 for K12. We had in our initial budget 3,100. So I am anticipating that we are close to that 3,100 and recommending that we stay at that rate. If you look at it by building level, the primary is it went down a little bit from 663 in November to 654 at the end of November, December. The intermediate schools stayed pretty stable. We had a little dip here in our middle school. And our high school held pretty well between November and December. So our ALC, we're running, we started at 38 kids. We have 60 in there now online. We've got around 80 kiddos in there full-time. Our onward programs got 10 and our CPAS high school is 907. Now those numbers, the nine through 12 programming up on the regular sheet includes the ALC online onward. Now those numbers, the nine through 12 programming up on the regular sheet includes the ALC online onward and high school CPAS. As far as money goes, we, we don't care who's bringing it in, in those levels, but it's nice to look at it for programming wise. Any questions on enrollment? On that sheet?
It'd be a tough one to track this year. So all the kids moving in and out of distance learning and who knows if they're.
Okay now?
There Jim, now we got you.
Did we lose Jim?
We did, he's back.
Okay. Um, and then the next sheet is enrollment estimates. Um, looking at it.
Okay, I can't hear you.
Okay, Jim, can you hear me now?
Just barely. Um, I'll get out and try to get back on.
You want me to keep going, Eric?
Please.
Okay. Um, we look at enrollment in a number of different ways. Not, not just, um, one way. So, um, we use a spreadsheet, the, uh, school finance enrollment spreadsheet. That's a, a total for each of.
Yeah, I'm back.
Um, so that sheet is showing that we would, would have approximately 3,112 kiddos at the end of this school year. If you go into next school year, um, there's 3,054. So as you can see, there's, you know, we're dropping about 50 kiddos. They're a little better. I also do a September to year end and I look at the lowest variance. Or the most kids that we've lost. And if you look at that, we were at 3,060 would be the total for this current year. 3,025 for next year. Again, um, a drop from 21 to 22. Then, um, looking at an average, we're getting closer back to that 3,100 for current year. And, um, again, 3,048, which is more like the school finance one. Then I look at the year-end grade progression, the low that's happened over the last several years and the average. If you look at those, it's possible we could increase. And if you recall, we had two years where we increased pretty good. Um, and those numbers are reflected in that year-end, um, progression. So, um, and if you take it into 22, the second one, the average is showing 3,200 kiddos. So the likelihood of us actually jumping up that, I can't say that we won't because we did. But I don't know that we want to budget based on, on that. So then I take an average of all these different areas and look at it and the average is 3,100. 3,105 for a current year. And 3,042 for, um, 22. And then I put down some kindergarten numbers down here. So we got kindergarten estimates of 220, 205, 198 and 222. With an average there of 211. We don't have a good handle yet on what kindergarten might look like next year. It's hard, hard to know with, uh, first of all, we can't get in front of the kiddos quite like we would like to. And last year, we had projected that we would have about 200 kindergartners and ended up with for what, 236 right now? On the other sheet? Yeah. So, um, you know, a lot can happen there. But again, um, we've been, Ben wanted to stay under the 210, didn't you, for K?
I think for next year, I mean, we're just starting this. And I, I guess the one thing I just want the board to know is that we were always, we always have unknowns, but this year more than ever, we're going to have lots of unknowns. We got, we got to start with a number. I think a 210 is a somewhat conservative number. And, you know, we go up or down depending on, you know, the information that we receive over the next several months.
Yep. And then the next thing that the board will need to decide on is what the state increase might be for the coming year by any, um, so next year, we're in the next two-year cycle. We won't know until they close the session and they haven't been done in May for quite some time. So hopefully they'll be a little better and a little more on time this year. But we've got to make a determination of what that might look like. If you go back to the economic crisis in the 2008, 9, 10, 11 area, we received 0% in those years. Uh, you know, 1% just before and coming out of. So the question is, what percentage would, would that be? What should we, we determine, uh, to put in our budget? Michelle would recommend at this time, 0%. I have no reason to believe right now that they're going to put a percentage on on anything. Because I think they're going to be discussing more of the COVID-19 and, and specialty pots of money, which will give us money, but it'll be in a different form with probably rules attached to it. So. And I think, uh, the last time that two years ago, I think we went one and a half percent, if I recall right, on the projection for, um, the start of the year. Um, then class size guidelines, that's the other thing that you set, um, as in we're proposing right now that we leave them the, the way that they were last year. 19 to 21 in our K and then it's 25 to 39 through 12. You can see those there. So do you have any questions regarding those parameters?
And all these parameters have been discussed with, at length with finance and the finance committee at next month's meeting, we'll discuss it further and, uh, present a recommendation from the finance committee to the board.
And the other piece that, that comes into the parameters is in negotiations. For negotiations, those set in a closed session. We won't set that outside. Um, I did do a budget analysis for 21, 22. Using the numbers we have currently for the revised. Typically we end up at 90% of, um, what we budgeted. So, um, if you look at the revised budget in that first column, that second box, uh, expenses, if, if everything came to, to pass, our fund balance would be about 4.6 estimated. If we end up more like we typically do, our fund balance would stay, uh, at 5.3 million. It's a little more flat. Last year, we, uh, when we went to the whole, um, shutdown, that end of the year went into distance learning from March till May, uh, that really skewed our budget. We did near expend for subs and, uh, some different things that normally we would have spent. And if that kind of thing comes to pass this year, if we, we ended up at that 96%, our fund balance would almost be 6 million, um, by the end. So then I moved it into, um, 2022. You know, you start with your estimated fund balance. I looked at the 100%, the 98 and the 96. And, uh, then I looked at a loss of 50 students and a loss of 75. Each student on here is worth $7,000 approximately, give or take. But, um, at 50 students, we'd be looking at a loss of revenue of 350,000 with zero from the state. That would be a big skills reduction and that is a solid reduction of 200,000. And then moving to a loss of 75, we'd lose revenue of 525,000 for, um, student bodies. And basic skills again. And then, uh, under the expenses area, under salary and benefit increases, I put 1.2 million in there. Uh, similar to what we settled the last time. That doesn't mean the board is in any way obligated to that amount. In fact, they're not. I just needed a number to put in there. And then other increases, which typically isn't, is, uh, not really that high in our world, but we did take some things out of the revised budget and we most likely will have to put some of those things back in. So we have to look at what we took out and put those back in. I used, uh, the PAC center as an example. Uh, we had a budget for that. We will have to have some kind of, position to deal with the PAC center as an example. So we would have to put that back in. So that gives, gives us, uh, a preliminary view of what revenue and expenses might look like for 22. And then of course, if you looked at the 100% column, if everything in the world comes to pass at 100%, which we know it doesn't, uh, your estimated fund balance would be 1.4 million. Uh, at 98%, which is more typical of what happens, uh, we'd be at the 2.8 million. And then at 96, if for some reason we're off that far, um, for, um, the revised budget, we didn't spend because we do have quite a bit of the year left to go. And we spend more heavily in the last third of the year than we do in the first part of the year. So, we'll have to see how, how much of that actually gets spent. But let's say we started with a fund balance of almost 6 million. We would be at the 3.5 million, uh, with the second year, the typical year. So what does that mean for reductions and possible reductions? And in normal year, we'd be making recommendations, um, probably between that 600 and $800,000 mark. Uh, which has been kind of typical for what we've, we've been doing last year was a little bit heftier than that. But prior to that, we, we were pretty close to that $600,000 mark most years. And in fund balance policy right now, uh, we are to, uh, we want a minimum fund balance of 10%. And of course that can always be changed. The good news with all of this is we have a fund balance. So we've got some play to make some decisions with. Um, the one thing that I didn't put on this board agenda was the legislature is talking about, and they do have the bill written up, um, giving us the larger of this year's enrollment or last year's enrollment. Well, if we got last year's enrollment, we could probably, we could be looking at, uh, increase of $700,000 in, in revenue. If they pass that. And, uh, they're also at the federal level looking at changing, uh, using last year's numbers for title and those areas if, to maintain that revenue. So there's a lot to happen. And then of course, we've got to find out what we're going to be allowed to do with the ESSER, the 1.3 million that I showed you earlier. So there are a lot of balls in the air and it's not a typical year.
Why are they considering letting us use different enrollment numbers just to help schools out through the top?
There were, there, uh, there are a lot of schools who, uh, went down pretty significantly.
I, I think that there's an argument, you can argue anything anyway you want, but there's an argument that, you know, a, a good portion of school districts across Minnesota have lower enrollment as a result of COVID-19. Much of the result of a large number choosing homeschool versus any kind of version of school district offering. At the same time, the state of Minnesota, uh, budget forecast was much better than what they had, uh, thought was going to happen, right? If you remember, you know, they were thinking, uh, it was at one time a, a 1.5 billion dollar surplus. Then it went to a 1.5 deficit or two or whatever. And then it ended up where it wasn't a deficit at all. It was something else. So then you take a look, well, why is it? Well, the state wasn't, wasn't, um, funding schools like they had projected that they were going to be doing. So, you know, there, there's some arguments related to that. So we'll, we'll see what happens. I mean, there's legislators are from every corner of the state of Minnesota and lots from different rural communities that are, you know, all getting hit in really hard ways. All that said, we, we don't know. I mean, all legislation in the world can be presented. It's what they hold on at the end of the day and probably, and typically it doesn't happen until the 11th hour when they have to end the session.
And it'll change a lot all the way down.
To us.
But you know, just like every year, well, that's why we have to constantly be communicating with our legislators. So they know what our position is.
Yeah. Any questions regarding, we, we set these parameters every year. And we just do our best.
I think we could probably roll into the, uh, well, if people don't have any more questions on budget, we probably can get pay equity stuff completed. Peter did text me that, uh, he's going to be closer to seven.
All right. Yeah, let's do that. Let's move on to the pay equity.
Jason isn't, uh, here right now. I think he hadn't intended to be here, but his technology had died. I'll take this and you can fill in, in the blank. Uh, pay equity is, is a report that we need to do every three years to be compliant. And basically it is taking a look at all of our, um, duties, uh, and jobs within the school district and takes a look at equity and pay mostly related to gender. Um, and, uh, we work hard to have high-quality job descriptions. Job descriptions then are compared to what's called the state match and assigned points based upon, certain values of what that job is. And, and then basically you take a look at the pay associated with that and you take a look at the comparisons of, of males and females. And they run it through a series of tests, uh, to make sure that you're in compliance and, you know, we're very proud to say that, uh, every year that we are tested, we, we fall, um, easily into the compliance area. But it is a report that we do every year. So, you know, basically I, I think the, the board does have to vote to accept it. Uh, and that allows, uh, us to check that final box for submission. Let's see, so one. Okay, maybe, maybe there'll be action at the next board meeting.
Uh, we have to have it in by January 30th. I think we just made a mistake on how it was. We, we should have put that under action.
Well, I guess everything looks good here. I mean, at least to me. Does anyone have a problem if we voted on this tonight?
No, we do it every, we do it every year, every three years.
Do you have a problem if we voted on this tonight? Chad and Jim, you guys are comfortable with that?
No problem. Sounds good. Let's do it.
No problem.
Let's uh look for a motion to uh approve the pay equity implement implementation plan twenty twenty. Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric Minx. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, starting with Jim.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Eric Stramberg, yes. Deb?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
All right, it is approved, so Jason can do whatever he needs to do with that. All right, um. Well, we can uh take a short recess if we want, or you have anything else to discuss?
Um, well, I think that you can probably review the last items. Don't you normally review uh future?
Yeah, we could go.
Board meetings and.
Future meetings, uh you guys can see we have finance. Um everything's listed below there.
Okay, that's not that's not how you stall time.
No, why do we set up like uh the activities committees and all that? Like those meetings, where are they scheduled for?
Turn on the hockey game.
Who sets those?
We have one on our agenda on my calendar for tomorrow at two o'clock.
For activities?
Yeah.
I have I have a this was set when I asked uh the activities directors. To put this meeting together. And this was set prior to us knowing who was on that committee from the board, and I guess I didn't even look to see. Who is on that committee from the board.
It's Eric and you are not on this meeting in the right.
No, that's why I just asked that question.
What uh what are you doing tomorrow at two?
Probably getting back into Princeton for activities meeting.
Well, it's 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 set for Zoom.
I'll do a Zoom. That's even better.
It's set for it's set for a Zoom.
Could you, Michelle, could you forward me that email so I have a Zoom invite? Yeah, I'll just do a Zoom. I'll.
I got it.
I'll sign in and uh do it while I drive home.
Okay, Peter's on. Hey, perfect.
Yes.
Peter, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
And uh I'm glad. Uh we were just finishing up with all of our topics here and we were trying to stall, but now we're good.
We're 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 good and everybody can hear me okay?
Yes, I just like. Not Peter to please mute your microphone. That'd be very helpful. All right, Peter, you have the floor.
Super. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna sh- share my screen. We're having, of course, internet problems down here, but the first meeting actually went okay, so. Um I'm gonna share my screen and turn off my video. Um that seemed to work best.
All right, we can see this screen, Peter. Everything's working.
Perfect, all right. Stop video, and that should help with the bandwidth. All right, it's a pleasure to be here with you. Well, not I'm not there with you. It's a pleasure to be on Zoom with you all. Uh just to review what we undertook for the district. We spoke with four hundred randomly selected residents across the community. The calls were done before the holidays. The the uh exact uh timing was December third to the eighteenth. Average interview time was eighteen minutes. I always pay attention to how many people are on the phone for an hour of their own volition, and that was five percent of the community. There's a lot of district historians, shall we say, that remember the good old days and our phoners aren't supposed to be rude, and so they they talked a lot. The non-response rate, once we convinced them we weren't doing any political polling or voter IDing or anything, uh was very reasonable, five percent. And so the four hundred sample overall is projectable to plus or minus five percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. Now, some of the demographics I'm gonna put up just so you can see what the sample was comprised of, and we I always start first with the. Distribution of uh the the cellphone versus landline. In Princeton this time, thirty-nine percent indicated that they were a cellphone-only household. Fifteen percent landline-only household, and the rest forty-six percent had both the landline and a cellphone. The first set on this chart is the uh residential longevity. You could see twenty-eight percent of the community of the residents. Had been in the community for ten years or less, while twenty-six percent had been in the community for over thirty years. So the the median longevity in the community is right at twenty years. You know, and this varies from state, from city or school district to school district, depending on the demographics, but. Twenty years on average is how long people have been in the Princeton School District. Twenty-four percent indicated they had a preschooler at home, thirty-three percent a child that attended the Princeton School District. And sixty-one percent indicated that they were empty nesters, and that does not uh put any sort of uh age to it. They could be a younger millennial. Uh without children. It's just as the presence of no children in the household. Twelve percent indicated they were renters. Uh the median self-assessed home value was right about a hundred and forty thousand. Uh that tends to be residents tend to overestimate the value of their homes, so my guess is the median from the county would come a little bit less than in the school district. Uh the uh political breakdown, the ID uh the party, forty-five percent indicated they were Republican, thirty-three percent Democrat, eighteen percent independent. And then finally, on demographics, we the age of the respondent, uh twenty-four uh percent were eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds. Uh with uh thirty-four percent over the age of fifty-five. Median age of the respondent came in at about forty years of age, forty-eight years of age. The. I apologize. We have a donkey in the neighborhood where we're staying down here. If you hear the donkey in the background. It's I. The the mayor from my previous presentation said, well, it's not the first jackass that we had at a at a city council meeting, so. There he goes again. How embarrassing. Um any anywho, uh the the college achievements of the resident. Uh comes in with some college experience, albeit short of college graduation. Thirty-two percent were high school graduates or less. Thirty-seven percent had some college experience, and thirty-one percent were either college graduates or post-graduates. The financially stressed versus financially comfortable in the community, um fifty-five percent said they were comfortable, forty-three percent said they were stressed. Um now, this has gone up. We don't know historically where it was in Princeton in the past. Um the norm across the state of Minnesota before the pandemic started last year was about thirty percent saying they were financially stressed. What we've seen over the course of twenty twenty is it go up to forty-five percent. So you're right in line with what we would expect to see. I'm gonna put a caveat on here because we did do a statewide. Uh I just ran it the day before I left last week. Um and in that statewide, we actually had fifty-three percent across the state saying they were financially stressed, which was up ten points from September. Um and so with the additional shutdown that we had from Governor Walz, that does seem to have upticked again. But now, as we will, as the restrictions are relaxed, we'll see if it goes back down. Um and then the balance of the gender balance, forty-nine to fifty-one percent men versus women. And then the geographic breakdown, thirty-nine percent lived in the city of Princeton, twenty-one percent in Princeton Township. And forty-one percent uh the rest of the district. So before I go into the survey, any questions on methodology, demographics, or anything?
No questions. And I just uh just to, you know, give a little back, you can give us a lot of background on on your company, Peter, but uh Peter does these. These surveys of all across the state of Minnesota. Um and even probably the Midwest, and he'll have an opportunity even to compare some of our. If you will, to other surveys that he's done recently in pandemic and out pandemic.
Yes, the the and and because there really are, there there's the pre and the post-pandemic of of norms, and I'll be talking about that. Yeah, I mean, we. I mean, I've been doing this. This is my twenty-seventh year of polling. Um and so, you know, I'm gonna try to provide additional levels of. Information for you when we talk about comparable, um you know, what the norms are, uh because just to see, you know, sixty percent feel this way. I'll try to put it in a context for you. Um and give it, you know, what it was and what it currently is, because a lot of school districts are having um. Uh issues on a lot of things, obviously, with everything that's gone on in the past eleven months. So first question. We always ask atmospherics first in the district, and the purpose of asking the atmospherics is simply, we know. In successful referendums, there are no really big red flag issues in the community. Because on election day, you want people to walk into the voting booth and make a cost-benefit analysis. What are we getting and how much does it cost? And not bring any sort of, you know, personality squabbles with the school board or superintendent or financial issues. Or curriculum or anything like that. So we ask this series of atmospherics to understand how people are feeling about the district. How do people feel about the overall quality of education provided in the Princeton schools? They feel pretty good, and they feel pretty darn. Started again this fall. Overall, eighty-seven percent rated favorably, twelve percent rated them unfavorably. Um it but what differentiate school districts is the excellent rating. Minnesotans are very difficult to get enthusiastic, and to say something is excellent is an enthusiastic response. Twenty-six percent excellent. The norm on that pre-pandemic was twenty percent. That's dropped down now to fifteen percent across the state as the norm. Um so we know where you were, uh but. Good about what's happening in the schools right now. Uh what do they like most about the district? The district, uh twenty-five percent love your teachers, one in four. This is open-ended. They can tell us anything. Um districts tend to residents tend to fall into three categories: teachers, programs, and the academics and what's going on in the classroom. What leaves the list for you are the personnel, the teachers at twenty-five percent. But. Or maybe six percent good education that I achieved stats that. You actually have twenty-eight percent that are resonating to what's happening in the classroom. That's what they like most. And then the programming portion, fifteen percent. So you do have two, and this varies from district to district. It depends on demographics. It depends on the educational. Uh background of of the respondent, everything like that, but your folks really are focused on teachers and what is going on in the classrooms. What's the most serious issue facing the district? Twenty-four percent, no surprise, say the COVID nineteen pandemic. Okay, hopefully, that is a temporary issue that will be going away sooner rather than later. Um but what else did people uh say? Only one other thing in an open-ended response got double digits, and that was the lack of funding. Uh eighty percent. You can see that everything else is still digits from high taxes, large class sizes, uh poor distance learning at two percent. I I will flag the high taxes as the top of the mind is on the lower side of what we basically see. A norm on that right now across the state is somewhere between twelve and fifteen percent typically where we see. But we'll talk specifically about taxes in a little bit. As the top of the mind concern, though, the tax issue isn't there for residents. Now, how do they feel you're doing meeting the learning needs of students? Do you meet the learning needs of all students? Most, only some, or very few? Well, nobody said very few, and you had a very strong sixty-five percent say all. Um the norm on that pre-pandemic was forty-five percent. The norm on that right now is thirty-five percent. Because people feel that students are not some certain groups of students are getting less in how education's being provided in the pandemic section. The the pandemic school year. Um so the sixty-five percent is the highest we've had since last February before the pandemic. You really are meeting for two-thirds of the residents. They're with. Most are only some, what is not having their learning needs. Across the board, the range from gifted and talented to average to struggling, special ed, behavior, emotional. Um so that's a primary, but the key takeaway is two-thirds saying all students' learning needs are being met. This is a strong endorsement of the quality of education compared to five years ago. I don't know the changes that have happened. Uh but the community sees it. When asked, is it much better, somewhat better, about the same, somewhat worse, or much worse? Fifty-one percent, a flat majority, said the quality of education is better. Only five percent said it was worse, and thirty-eight percent said it was about the same. And this one, we always rate you a better, worse. You're at ten to one positive to negative. The norm on this right now is two to one positive to negative. People feel really good about whatever changes to. The quality of education in the last five years. Now, how they were the job that you implemented the COVID teens. You've earned good up in my raise eighty-six percent indicated. See, the order good, eleven percent only fair or poor. Um the norm on this across the state right now is. Higher form rating this. Morely, one of the big issues is communication piece, the how the districts handle.
Oh, boy.
There we go.
All right. Well, so far, it's. Yeah.
Yeah, am I still on with you?
Um, you're back. You're you we lost you. You were completely off, and now you're back, Peter. We for about the last.
Okay, you can hear me. All right, I'll.
Peter. Peter, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, but the last few minutes, we had a lot of break. You were breaking up a lot, so we it was pretty difficult. But we.
All of a sudden, I got the unstable.
We can hear you now pretty well.
Okay, let's keep trying to plug through this. It just flashed up unstable internet connection again. I'm on a five G hotspot. I don't know why it's not working. Got to.
Pretty well now, Peter.
You can hear me now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, let's get this back up and going again then. All right. Does district do a good job spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Seventy-four percent agree with that statement, seventeen percent disagree. Norm on that right now is fifty-five percent. Very strong, twenty more it's higher. Are the schools a good investment for the pro for the property taxes paid? Absolutely. Eighty-five percent. Have you spent past operating and bond referendum funds responsibly? Sixty-nine to twenty percent agreement to disagreement. Norm is around fifty-five percent. And does the district ask for a tax increase only as a last resort? Sixty-two percent agree, twenty-four percent disagree. Very depending on how long this is the district went up for a property tax increase. The district is doing a great job of involving the community in this difficult time of the pandemic. You're at the norm pre-pandemic across the state, seventy-seven percent saying you do a good job of involving the community in decisions. That is dropped to both sixty-five percent. It's obviously much more difficult to involve people if you can't meet in person. Um so how whatever you've done has been very effective comparatively. And then the first time we dip or toe into the waters of a referendum, and the statement is simply the schools are. and the statement is simply, the schools are a good investment, and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. 68% agree with it, 24% disagree with it. Now, they don't know if it's an operating levy or a bond referendum. If it's $10 a month or $10 a year, it's simply to ascertain what is the core opposition. How many disagree in concept? And you can see 24% disagree in concept, a very, very low number. Anytime that's under 30%, that means the community is willing to have a discussion. So in very good shape at the outset. But on the keys on this, especially on the financial credibility, the district does have the credibility needed to be requesting operating funds. Very high of spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. Job performance rate. Ben, are we okay? Give me a thumbs up still?
Yeah, we're okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were behind on slides, but you're, you're good.
It's good, okay. On job performance rates, the school board, positive 68%, negative 23%. This one is always a ratio, you're three to one, positive to negative. Right now, in the pandemic across the state of Minnesota, the norm is 50/50, one to one. So you're doing an outstanding job. On the superintendent administration, better than three to one, almost three and a half to one, 73/22. Norm on this is 55/40, about one and a half to one. So the governance and the administration side are very well regarded in the Princeton School District. The closer you get to the kids, there tends to be more fondness. And so the principals are normally the next highest, 76%. And then the teachers at 89% are very strongly regarded. And the teachers are higher than what we're seeing. There has been some pushback across the state with everything happened this, opening of schools and everything. Where the norm is rating the unfavorable has gone to between 15 and 20%. Yours is only at 6%, so you are running atypical to what we're seeing. So an overall financial management evaluation, 63% rate the financial management positively, 32% unfavorably. Norm on this is 45% favorable to 48% unfavorable with the rest unsure. It's actually gone more negative than positive. So a very, the district has that reservoir of goodwill needed at a trust on financial matters to make a request of the public. Now, we saw in the open edit on the most serious issue that only 5% said high taxes was the most serious issue facing the district. When we asked specifically though, how would they, what do they think of their total property taxes? Are they high, average, or low? 49% say they're high, 42% say they're average, and 3% say they're low. You're right on the borderline of what, anytime a district has 50% of residents, a majority saying their taxes are high, we consider it to be a hostile property tax claimant. So you're right on the edge of it. Now, what, what does that mean for potential referendum requests? The higher level, the more people saying high, the more sensitivity for the amount of the increase there will be. Now, you know, what's extraordinarily high, we've had districts in the past 18 months that have 65, 70% in the very high and somewhat high category. That makes it difficult to have a conversation with residents. So folks are willing, they're, they're on the edge, there will be a sensitivity to the cost of the package though. Now, the good news for the districts, district is, is they're not blaming you. 42% say their school taxes are very high or somewhat high. So it's down seven points from their evaluation of total taxes. So their, their animus towards taxes would be more focused towards the city or the county versus the school district, which is helpful to know, but it's not help, but it's not helpful in this essence because cities and counties typically don't have to ask voters to approve a property tax increase, unlike school districts. Are the Princeton schools adequately funded? This is, this is really interesting. This yo-yos depending on who the governor is, what the legislature does year by year on school funding. And I really had an anticipation with everything that's gone on in Minnesota in public education this year that there would be more concerned about the adequacy of funding. And there's actually less so. People seem to think the school district saved a heck of a lot of money by not being open in the spring. And so the, the norm on this was about 45% saying yes and 45% saying no. Basically, everybody was just confused if the schools are adequately funded. We're seeing this now somewhere between 55 and 65% of people. Yeah, they are really far. That really is going to be a communications challenge. The challenge for the bond referendum coming up, and it's, it's surmountable, absolutely, is the perception of the buildings and facilities. And when you ask folks, do the buildings meet the needs for educating children today? You have 78% saying yes, 17% saying no, and 5% are unsure. Now, so the messaging, the thought that the buildings are in desperate need of repair, that's not the reality that folks, residents are seeing. The diff, the message is that we have to fix things. The message is, how are the improvements going to make our buildings go from good to excellent? And the important part will be, as much as possible, tying that in to what's happening in the classroom. How is this going to improve a child's education? Because for the most part, Minnesotans are practical and bright shiny buildings for bright shiny building sake, it's, that is not practical. They want it linked to what's happening in the classroom and how is it going to improve not only the child's education, but also the potential programs that could be offered to the child. Yeah. Here. Balls, ask for the tax increase. Before any property tax increase, against property tax increase, are you persuadable for some and others? You can see at the outset, you're ahead by one. You actually have 1% more people saying that they would support any property tax increase than be against any property tax increase. Over the past five years, on all this, all the referendums, and we've worked on a lot of bond and operating levies, the norm at the outset on this is actually a negative four, where you have 4% more people saying they're against any than for any. Really is a good place to be. People are willing to have the conversation. Critical piece on this potential for success is going to be the persuadables, obviously, and where, how they fall. First, 27% said nothing. And that is actually very manageable. Anytime it's under 35% in a community saying nothing, that means that it has a possibility, it's going to asked for, as opposed to just be, no, I don't want any, any property tax increase. The, the norm, those that are willing to accept a tax increase comes in right at about $11, $12 a month at the outset. Now, is that number set in stone? It's not set in stone. It depends what's being asked for. And so we've had districts that have gone three times higher than the, what, what the tax tolerance is, because what they're asking for has extraordinarily high support in the community. So it's only meant to give you guidance, to set those guardrails, realizing the further you go away from that tax tolerance point, more strongly supportive components of the budget need to be in place in order to be successful. So what parts are highly regarded. So long list would use for property tax increase for this purpose. The green is support, the red is composition, the yellow is the unsure. You can see, you have majority support for everything tested. But there is a hierarchy in residents' minds. The first tier, and it's, it's at the top. Eight out of 10 residents would support a property tax increase to increase the size of high school classrooms. Then we go down into the mid to high 60s. Updating the HVAC, improving mechanical systems, rebuilding and modernizing CTE spaces, expanding the high school cafeteria and kitchen, expanding the intermediate school cafeteria and kitchen. We go to deferred maintenance and then remodel the high school media center. All 60% to 69%. The four at the bottom, you could, there's a theme in there. They're all athletic based, and it's not unique for the athletic base components of any bond referendum to be on the lower end of support, because oftentimes, the athletic portions are seen as a want versus a need. But you still do have majority support for all four. The installation of artificial turf, 55%. Additional gym at the high school, 53%. Upgrading the locker and weight rooms, 53%. And the field house at the high school, 51%. So the takeaway from this, you know, in going back and putting it with the tax tolerance, you know, just 12 bucks, roughly about 150 bucks a year. A package that you could go above that if needed, if the primary portion of the package, and by the portion, I'm talking about 75, 80% of the, of the package was going for those items, supported at 60% or at especially we're looking at the HVAC mechanical systems and the high school classrooms. So we'll come back then, do you think these options are a good idea or a bad idea? And the community nets out two to one, these are a good idea, 64 to 31. Then we tell them that whole package, it was $49 million. We tell them what the tax increase is on an average house in the community, and we ask, do you support or oppose? At the outset, 59% support, 36% oppose. So it's a good, solid result at the outset. You can see the intensity is, it's 17% strongly support, while 19% strongly opposed. We asked the reason why they would support or oppose. The blue are the reasons for support, the red are the reasons for opposition. 17% would support simply because they're stakeholders, they have kids in the district. 14% would support because they just support education, it's important. 14% would support because of a reasonable cost. The key on this, and what if you do go forward, what will need to be driven up is the need portion. At the outset though, it's pretty good. You have 17%, so it ties for first place, saying that this is a need based decision to support. Whether it's needed, the buildings need the updates, you need the sports updates, or you need more space. And the reason that the driving home, the need is important is because in the, in getting people to vote in an election, nobody wakes up on election day and says, I need to go vote yes, because the cost is reasonable. They get up and go vote yes. Something's needed. But for, what are the reasons for opposition? 11% taxes too high, 7% the cost, 7% poor spending, 4% too focused on sports, 2% during pandemic, 2% don't have kids, and 2% not needed. For those that are just evaluating at the outset, need versus not need, it's better than eight to one. So you really, the, the people, the dividing line for opponents, they're not arguing it's not needed. It's based on cost, which is not surprising. I will test a few arguments and a few opposed.
All right. Hopefully he'll get on, back on soon. There he is.
I'll just keep coming in and cutting out, and we're almost there, so hopefully this is the last cut out. You can hear me again?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, so the first argue that had, this is, would it make you much more likely to doesn't make no difference to you, is because of pandemic, the need for larger classrooms, classrooms has become apparent for social distancing purposes. 44% say that makes them much more likely to support, 25% somewhat more likely. The high school has not been updated since 1985. 4% much more likely, total impact of 63%. Then we go down, they're effective, but they're not as effective as the first two. The low construction and interest rates, 33% impact with 35, 65% reach. And the importance to invest in career and technical education, 28% impact, total reach of 60%. On the flip side, the arguments and opposition. One leads the list, and the, in the, in the statement is basically during the pandemic and with economic uncertainty, now is not the time. 40% impact, 60% total reach. Taxes going up too quickly, not as high as we see in other communities or other districts looking at referendum. This, I mean, this has been, since I've been doing this 27 years, this always leads the list. 30% read, impact 52% reach. And you can see the argument that the facilities are adequate, that goes back to that need versus not need. That's the least impactful argument. So we test, we say these statements, we test their impact, and then go back and ask them one more time. Are any of these things make you change? And really, you don't have a lot of people changing their mind. It remains 59 to 35 with 7% unsure. Now, at the outset, you know, this looks good. The community's willing to have this conversation. You do have equal amount strong support, strong opposition at the end of it. The key is going to be, as you think and plan moving forward, it is going to be the support, supporters have to get to the polls. And so it's going to be about the creation for the district and bill. It's going to be about the grassroots effort that volunteers in the community can do on a vote yes effort. Because in a special election like this November, an odd year election, the turnout, this is going to be the show, it's not going to be the presidential race, thank goodness, of 2020 where everybody voted. Certain people are going to vote. And in school district elections in off years, the problem districts have is their most high supporters are the least likely to vote. Parents, and this has been the case now for the last five to six years. The prioritization of parents voting in off year elections is quite frankly depressing. And so you really do need a strong grassroots effort to get parents out, to get them to vote. And you also need to tie that with a really strong effort on early voting. Because we found time after time, the, the path to defeat on election day is a lot of parents on election day, if they haven't voted, if they're running late and Billy or Anna has hockey that night, they're taking the kids to hockey rather than go vote. So it really is imperative to have that strong infrastructure for the vote yes and the communication from the district in order to have success. And then just the last section on communication, where are folks getting their information? 27% from the local newspaper, 22% from the website. But the grapevine is alive and lush in Princeton School District. And by the grapevine, I combine word of mouth and teachers and staff, it's people talking. 34%, one in three saying that's their primary source of information, and then everything else in single digits. How do people prefer to get their information? It pretty much pairs up pretty well with how they're getting it. 30% prefer the newspaper, 22% the website, 18% would like a mail newsletter, and 12% email. What typically you look at is the divide between print versus electronic. And when you're looking at that, you can see you have 30% the local newspaper, 48% or 18% the mail newsletter, so about half, 48%. And then on the electronic side, side between the website, the email, the newsletter, and social media, you have about 43%. So the preference in the community split, you have to do both of them well. And when you're communicating with residents, it's not that the district has tipped over and might really would prefer to receive it. And when you're communicating with residents, it's not that the district has tipped over and might really would prefer to receive an electronic, it's split right now. And then when we specifically ask them where they're getting their information, do they get a lot of information, some. Not at all. Comes in what leads the list is the Union Times newspaper. With thirty eight percent impact, a total reach of sixty two percent. But you can see the power of the grapevine with informal discussions with friends and neighbors, thirty seven percent impact with two thirds of the community. Getting at least some information and then everything else falls down. From district website to children to the district newsletter, district employees down to social media. So what can we say at the outset? The community is willing to have this discussion. There's support in the community for something and some improvements in the buildings. The components that were tested, they have majority support. All of them, but there is a hierarchy of what's important. And so the key really is going to be having most of the funds from the bond. Being used for the purposes that people support at the highest levels. The other thing I will say, going back to how I started and discussing why we asked atmospherics. The atmos are really strong. The district has reservoir and well there in the community. And that's what's necessary in order to have a potential referendum, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, this is an important opportunity for you to to ask lots of questions of Peter.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, what was, did you say four hundred was a total number of people surveyed and response?
Yes, it was.
And then.
Oh, I'm sitting in the dark, so turn my camera on.
My second question is, do you have a, as far as the demographics from like counties? Do you have that separated out from the different counties and how they responded or not?
No, we just, I broke it down by the city of Princeton, Princeton township and the rest of the district. So I can break down the demographics between in those three, but we I did break it down by county.
All right, thanks.
And you'll see we have Ryan Hoffman joining us as well and he's assisted us with some of these discussions in the past. Peter, I think one of the questions that will be on people's minds is. Timing, you know, it does appear that that there is at least some rationale or maybe some strong rationale to have this conversation. And to ask questions of the community. In way of a referendum, but as you know, there's different times that school boards can go out for that. We would just like to get your input on best timing, if there is any.
The best timing. The well, years ago, the best time was always May. Now it's, now it's really November is is the best time. What's happened? Eight, well, February is difficult. Obviously, because you're always coming off a November election the year before regardless. And people start questioning, why didn't you just have it in November? April, we just, that's a no go for us with clients, be simply because of April fifteenth and everybody paying their their income taxes. People are very, shall we say, less than thrilled about taxes at that point. May has become more and more difficult with parents. Going back, the kids are finally outside playing and running around. And they just won't go to the polls at the levels that they typically do. And then August is always on the table. And if there was one day to absolutely one hundred percent stay away from, it's August. Because in August, the parents and families of of children are probably off on vacation or up at the cabin and they're not focused on schools. So it really does leave November as the most viable. It makes sense this timing, as you look at the communications efforts. Districts can do the kickoff at the start of the school year with the referendum, getting the information out there. The vote yes can put together just kind of a natural campaign. Based on school calendars, if we're hopefully all back to normal by this coming fall. And then you. You 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 have a better chance getting those parents to come out and support. To keep districts eighty percent of parents and looking at the demographics and how support levels break down. You have about eighty percent of parents currently supporting. So for every ten parents, eight support, it's critical as many of them are available as possible to come out.
Okay, thanks, Peter, that was good information. Go ahead. Jim, ask your question, you're on mute though.
Go ahead, Jim, you're on mute.
Okay, what are the most effective ways of inviting community communication with the district?
Say, say, what's the most effective ways to invite the community to become involved or?
For for discussion, for communication.
It really, it it's it's more and more difficult. Because everybody's busy and you know, I will, I will say, really, one other unique finding, I probably didn't point it out as we were going. Your folks are more in tune with what's going on. In their school district than what we've seen in the past ten months across Minnesota. And by that, I mean, when it's some of the questions like on the rating of the school board. You had a very typical five percent, I believe it was single digits saying, I don't have enough information. In order to make that evaluation. What we saw when the pandemic hit, people were focused on it during twenty twenty. They've been focused on the pandemic, they've been focused on racial equity issues and they've been focused on the presidential race. They weren't focused on local government. And so all of a sudden, people, twenty to twenty five percent of people were saying, I don't have enough information. There was a disconnect to their local government unit. You don't have that in prison, that connection's still there and still in place. So it's really, that's that's a great place to be. It's really, you know, if you do a virtual town hall meeting, you're not going to have a lot of attendees typically. If you do a town hall in person, you're not going to have a lot of attendees. The key is though is to publicize it, put it out there, make sure people know that if they want to have a say, they have the ability. You know, it's really one of those that 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 trust thing. If they don't see the opportunities, then there's something's wrong. For for involvement. And just to be as transparent as possible for as many opportunities. And and oftentimes I always say. If you don't have a lot of people showing up, that's actually pretty good. The problem happens when you have a hundred people lined up out the door, they're probably there for something very specific. So, you know. That's kind of, that's, yeah, I think that's probably the best answer, it's just difficult. But whatever you're doing is working for residents.
Peter, I have a question about when you tested, you know, what people would support the different items. And, you know, one of the big questions. That may come up is this whole idea of a field house versus not a field house and when we were. Went through our community process all last year and went through the design process. You know, a field house wasn't on that, what was presented. And there was some questioning about us on that and I just wanted to know from your perspective. With the field house being the very last item on the list. Of support. You know, what does that tell us or what doesn't that tell us? Because it still had fifty one percent support.
Ben, I I I think. If you look at the totality of what's being asked for. It's it, what's going to impact, obviously it's going to be overall of field house comparison to the package as a whole. When I said earlier. You know, the the trick that actually came in under the tax tolerance. Level, but it failed because they had an issue of. A red flag issue that people focused on. It was a field house. And well, and another district did it with a second sheet of ice. And so that becomes a potential, something that the opponents can latch on to. Because the field house is seen as a want versus a need, so that'd be the caveat, it's that.
Hey, Peter, we lost.
All right, I'm back, all right, I'm back, where did I get cut off there, Ben, I was babbling and all of a sudden I was gone.
How is this sometimes considered a want versus a need?
Yeah, and and so I I would say that the the more items you have that are athletic based. The more potential problem it is depending on the the proportion. You know, I always, I always like to say, you know, twenty percent athletics is is a pretty comfortable rate level. Especially when you do have majority supporting. So, you know, we we put the field house in and then we also tested the gym. I I looking at that, to me, it's an either or. And and additional gym is much more comfortable with pass from what I've seen. Where field houses really can become that hot button issue in a community would be my evaluation and my experience.
And and just so the group knows, it so happens that what was presented last year. In the forty nine million dollar package was about an eighty twenty spit split, eighty percent full academic spaces. About twenty percent were dedicated to fields, grounds and athletic. Facilities, so that's about where that package sits. Was presented.
Can I also have any more questions for Peter? All right.
Peter, it doesn't look like anyone else has any more questions. Thank you so much for taking time when you're away to come visit our school board and. This is awesome information and and we'll likely be reaching out more when you return from vacation, thank you.
You're more, you're more than welcome, it was a pleasure and like I always say, I I'm not a lawyer, I don't charge any extra. I'm out, we're here from takeoff to landing on referendum, so anything you need, feel free to reach out. Thank you all, be well.
I do, I do want to just mention, because we have Tim Henninger, our Union Times newspaper editor. Just want to make sure they heard that the number one source of information from our community in the survey was the Union Times. So I think that's a nice feather in your cap and we certainly took note of that and we're going to. Even increase what we do with the Union Times more if we if we can, if you allow us to do so, so, thank you.
All right, we don't really have anything else to discuss tonight, do we? Does everyone feel comfortable with the information Peter presented?
Will he be sending a copy of that to all of us then?
Yeah, yeah, it should be, it should be on your school board agenda. I have it, if you can't, if you don't have it, I can send it in an email for the presentation, if you want. I have the actual survey too where I can send that, it's a little bit different format. I think it's just important to recognize that that, you know. This, the Peter's organization, it's Leatherman. I'm forgetting the name of the. Morris Leatherman. It is, it is widely considered the top polling company like in the Midwest. Right? But these, these results that we're getting aren't willy nilly, right? They there's a high reliability of what we got here and that's why we we invested in utilizing. Them and it wasn't just the hey, take the survey, they made appointments. And they had long conversations on the phone on phone with different constituents in our community. So it's it's a big, it's a big deal and I think it's. You know, I was disappointed because every time you were saying some amazing things about our district, like we're some of the best scores he's seen with public perception on public schools, he would. He would cut out. Like, no, no, cut out. Or, you know, it's widely thought that the school district is doing much better, you know, now than five years ago, I mean, then cut out. So I think that we're doing good work, so, thank you.
Well, I do think that, I mean, we need to take some time to digest this information. But if we are going to move forward with this and possibly go out for a referendum, we need to. I think he laid it out that November is probably the best time, but if we did want to go in May, like. I didn't, I mean, obviously Ryan knows, but we'd have to get all our paperwork submitted to the state like. Within three weeks or a month, probably.
Are we gonna, are we gonna put together that same group that came up with the suggestions?
Well, I I think that's a good, a a good question, you know, we. We had a lot of integrity and 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 following a process of asking the community what they felt their needs were and that's why we had a committee. Of stakeholders of over a hundred people that worked over the last year to to put together a recommendation for the school board. And if you remember that, that work was a continuation of work that started probably eight, nine years ago or more. When the community said we had these needs back then, but. The school board back then had to make a priority and say, no, we can't afford that now, but we will revisit that. The board followed through with their commitment to the community, they brought that that group back together last year. Went through the process, made the recommendation to the board and the board, once again, out of respect to our community, decided to make, take. The question off of the ballot, given the unknowns of the pandemic. But the the board made it very clear at that time. That this was such an important, there were so many important needs that this is something that we can't ignore and we must bring back when the time is right. So it was really about timing, but in addition to that. The board and that community task force wanted to take one step further. And ask the community through this polling process that you had presented tonight. So you have additional information. But to answer your question, Jim, I think too, out of respect to that community, I do think it is important, or that committee that we bring this. This, these polling results back to that committee, allow them an opportunity to review it. Get further recommendations from them and then we will need to, you know, ultimately, it's only the school boards can vote to to put. A bond referendum on the ballot.
Yeah. Yeah, my my point would be that it would be really respectful to share the polling results with that group.
And 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 I'm going to even take it one step further and this is why, you know, I think it's important for us to share these results with the entire community. I'm happy that Tim Henninger is is here to to cover this. We want to get this information out in in the effort of in spirit of being transparent. You know, so we want to share this with the community and I want to share this with our teachers and our staff. I mean, how cool is it for them to see that ninety percent or eighty nine percent, you know, think that they're super happy with our teaching staff, right? And then and you compare that to what Peter gets and pulls in other districts across the state, which is my floor.
And the interest there is in what's going on in the classroom, I mean, the actual meat potatoes of what we do.
Yep, so I think sharing it, but but I also want to share, say, Jim, that I would not support like starting from ground zero with this.
No, 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 no.
God, we had dozens.
Yeah, that's not my point.
Well, let's bring it back to them. Okay.
Yeah, I think it needs to go back to them, I mean, we just had four hundred committee members essentially. Just, I mean, fifty nine percent of them just said that they would support it. I mean, that's a four hundred person committee essentially.
Yeah, I'm just saying it would be like kind of a fruitful thing to get these people together and show them the poll results, so.
I think we need to share all the information, but I think that. I think that May, a May election or a May vote for this is completely out of the picture. So I think we just need to try to present this to the committee members. Sooner than later and we digest this information and hopefully come up with a decision. And one of the things that we need, what we think we can do.
Yeah, and ultimately, and Ryan, maybe you can answer this question, if we wanted to, if the board did decide, you know, or was thinking that maybe next November was the time. At what would be the the date? at what would be the, the date that the board would need to make that decision? Am I, are we thinking like a July or August?
Yeah, the, the, so the way it's set up is you, you submit the review and comment first, and then you approve the resolution for an election. So I would say the review and comments in the middle would be the end of July. And then the actual resolution would be, yeah, that first week of August or so.
Okay.
I also think that what actually would, would go in that bond needs to be like that again. I mean, we just had a whole apple cart upset. And hopefully we've learned some things from that. And I think what in it would need to be revisited as well. I don't know how, but I don't think we take that exact same list and say, okay, we're going to do that exact same.
Okay, well, the, what was presented to the board la- last year, that forty-nine million, that was a result of the work of that committee. So if the board wanted to see some, you know, significant modifications of that, I think that then we would be, it would be essential to, to bring that committee together multiple more times to kind of flush that out.
I don't know if it was necessarily significant, more just. How things would work and potentially classrooms that are what they think. Again, but just can we touch this classroom? Also because this classroom needs a little work, I don't know, something like that.
Well, I, I think we need.
I don't think we should add a field house first.
I think we need to take, to, you know, look at everything and make modifications.
At least review it.
Yeah, review and see what needs to be done, but we also have to keep the committee in mind too.
We, but we also have staff that have gone through a major transformation of what they do and how they do it. And I think we would be remiss if we did not step back and what, dream bigger or different than we did a year ago.
I think with COVID, we have learned. And if we don't go and look at what we have learned, what was working, what was not, what is the future? We will not be benefiting these children for a better education. We really got to look, these last six to eight months has been a crash course for our teachers, our students and our families. What are their needs?
Yeah, and, and maybe we can look at, maybe pull in together some focus groups. Yeah, I would really want to work with Von who has helped us facilitate some of these. But, you know, we could bring together additional focus groups, especially teachers to look at what have we learned, what is different, you know, the space and how you move. You know, it's, it's definitely, we're just, we're not in the, we're definitely never going to go back to students sitting in dust and rolls. But that's not where we want to go. But the way that our building is set up in these small little rooms and the furniture we set up for dust and rolls. The building and all the infrastructure was set up for a twentieth century education model. And, you know, we're looking post-pandemic, twenty-first century and beyond learning. What would that, what?
But I think when we went out the last time, based on what we knew, it was like, this is probably it for a while. So let's make this it, incorporate what we now know that we didn't know then.
Make it right.
Well, you know, honestly, one of the biggest things might be, you know, if you take a look at a model like a college campus kind of a thing where, you know, students may only have, you know, basically they are in a hybrid all the time. They may have class, you know, two or three days a week, but then they're on campus in the commons, the libraries, you know, and in areas that, and we don't really have that, much of that for students to be in goal that isn't in the classroom. I mean, I, I remember our students, if they want to talk to each other at the high school, they have to walk laps around the hallways. There's no place for them to be.
That's right. That's exactly what they do and they.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, I think that our next step is to get this out to the, the committee members and the survey results.
I also think, kind of shifting gears a little bit, I think that the public perception is positive because I think on a district level, you have been very transparent and very prompt with your information. And I just really commend you all for that.
I have a question too. Will, will these poll numbers be disseminated soon or in a couple of months? Or how will this get out to the community?
Well, I, I'm hopeful that, that we can get it, if there'll be some coverage in the Union Times. And then there'll be some follow-up communications from the districts in our Tiger Times. We may put some things in social media. Hi, Tim, I see your hand up. Do you want to say something?
There is a plethora of data here to go through, okay? I mean, you, I could write six stories off of the data that Peter gave me. But yeah, initially, let's get something out next week and go through this. And then you can come back, it can come, it can be revisited a number of times. Because it's, I mean, like you said, Ben, I mean, he's, they're, they're the Cadillac of survey firms in the Midwest. This is really tight stuff. I mean, you've got, you've got the ammunition that you need to prepare. I mean, it's going to be November, it needs to be November. You can't put it together any quicker than that. That'll give you time to revisit committee or build it. And then, you know, figure out your social media, your strategy with us, your community meetings. May, you know, Lord willing, we'll have a better handle on COVID in three months and see where it's at. And then certainly going into the summer. And then I think they're going to be receptive. The good news is, is they've given you the data and they didn't turn themselves off during a most difficult time. In December, when it was hard for everybody, they gave you eighteen minutes on average of their time to tell you what they thought about this. And that is huge. And, I mean, you can't take a bigger brick of gold to your bank than this data. It's just how you're going to work with it and, and get it out there. So, I mean, I think you're back on track. I mean, after watching this, this was one of the first pieces, we saw it disappear back when COVID started was, you know, we watched your effort come off and now it's time to bring it back. I think they're going to be receptive. I mean, you've got the data. It's good. I mean, you know, I see a lot, I've seen a lot of this kind of stuff in the years I've done it. You couldn't have given somebody a better tool to work with. So it's good. Good job.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks for those remarks. Yeah, and, and you're right, this is something that I think we just need to strategize in how we drip data out over the period of time. There's certain themes that we're going to be able to pick from this data. And then I think that we try and, you know, we drip things out over the next, you know, every month, you know, hit a different piece, you know? Whether it be the, the tax impact, whether it be, you know, the need. You know, there's things that we learned in there of people's perception on need. You know, so there's going to be lots of different pieces that come out. So, yeah, great. And, and I, I love the comment about this is, this survey is worth a lot. It, it is good information for us to have and it validates a lot of the work that, that you guys are doing as school board members. So, thank you.
It's good, good to see those results.
Yeah. Excellent.
Good that, yeah, that that's where people recognize that really the hard work does come from.
And, and it means a lot too, because sometimes we get caught up in the negative. You know, someone takes a pot shot on the Princeton bulletin board or something. It's really negative. And it hurts your feelings and you think that everybody feels that way, but it's not, you know, it's very small, right?
Well, I, I thank you, Ben, for all the community outreach you've been doing. It's excellent.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second. Second.
Well, by roll call, starting with Eric Strandberg. Yes, Sue?
Yeah.
Don?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.